String Sprouts are free violin, viola, and cello classes that aim to bring music education to preschool-aged children in underserved areas in the Omaha Council Bluffs area. The program is currently in its second year at two Council Bluffs locations, Longfellow and Franklin Elementarys. The String Sprouts program provide weekly instruction to students starting in preschool and follows them through elementary school. This unique partnership with the Omaha Conservatory of Music, funded by local foundations and generous donors, aims to positively affect parents, help kids prepare for school, and increase vocabulary development. They're really cute, and if you need to come sneak up behind us, you certainly can. So they are here to perform for you.
Okay, so we have four songs to perform today. Okay, we have four songs to perform today. The first song is "Rockabilly Blues." All right, Sprouts, please look at me. Follow my feet. One, two, three, and the violin's up. There you go, and the point just follow me. Good. We're gonna be on the E string. And where are we? Ready, go. We're crossing on the A string, C string. There we go, follow my feet. One, two, three, and violin's up. There you are. Okay, mountains up fingers. All right, our third song is "Stepping on the Dance Floor." Okay, follow my feet, Sprouts. Here we go, one, two, three. All right, now your bow is on the E string. And take your slide down. Are you ready? All right, our last song is "Superhero Rescue," our favorite song. Here we go. Feet together, one, two, three. My knees up. You are on the A string, A string, and take your slide down. Three, raise your fingers. That will be easy.
Thank you very much, Sprouts, for joining us. You were a great star to our meeting. Thank you. Keep studying, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, guys.
All good. All right. Good job. Nice rescue mission. Thank you, guys. Kelly. Okay. Thank you. All right, let's go back.
I am opening the Council Bluffs Board of Directors' public hearing for the 2017-2018 budget. Let the record show that all board members, except Dr. Jill O'Grass, are present for this hearing. And the superintendent and district administration are recommending approval of their 2017-2018 budget. I would ask Dr. Bruckner or a designee to quickly review the recommendation. Following the review, we will receive questions from board members. When board members have completed their questions, we will take questions or comments from others who are present. Official board action on the 2017-2018 budget will be determined during the regular meeting, which is scheduled to follow immediately after a public hearing. Dr. Bruckner?
Thank you very much. Board members have heard this information in several different ways because they study it for more than 10 minutes, but tonight we give a public hearing about this information and invite any comments. Mr. Wilson, thank you.
Thank you. It's tough to follow that last act there. Okay, so we're going to talk tonight about the 2017-2018 budget, and we're also going to be looking at a little bit of information for the proposed, the projection for 2018 and '19 as well to kind of show where we're at. Okay, so again, I've showed this to the board before. There's two ratios that school districts in Iowa are encouraged to follow. One is the unspent authority percentage, and one is the solvency ratio. Unspent authority, there is a calculation, and they want us to be between eight, they want us to be between eight and 12 percent on this calculation. And on the solvency ratio, they want us to be between five and 10. The unspent authority ratio is the more important of the two because we could have, just for the public's information, we could have $100 million in the bank. If our authority is zero, we're not authorized to spend one dime. So we have to keep the unspent authority at a level that would take into account any unforeseen issues such as a funding cut or loss in, certain grants. Solvency ratio is primarily a function of did you have a surplus or a deficit for the year, and it's very important when issuing general obligation bonds. This is our unspent authority trend since 2006, 2007. The red lines that I have going horizontally across, that is what I call the Goldilocks Zone. That is where IESB and other state agencies suggest that school districts maintain. If you're above that line, you're probably not spending as much as you could on some educational opportunities, and if you go below that line, financially, you've got some issues. This is the district solvency ratio. Again, I show the Goldilocks Zone for that. You can see that we've been up and down a lot. Just for the public's knowledge, the 0910 drop that we had in that year was due to the state mandating a 10 percent across-the-board cut for all state expenditures in the middle of the school year. So that's why we have to have a decent unspent authority on hand in order to absorb little problems like that. Okay, so current state funding is not adequate to meet our needs. The district is, I hesitate here because I had this, I had this presentation set up, and when we moved it into another platform, it's showing slides I normally wouldn't show here. So I'll be skipping through a few of these. Current state funding is not adequate to meet the needs of the district. Property valuations that we're going to be using for the 17-18 year have dropped. Federal grants are being reduced. The local grants that we get, there's one from Iowa West for our SAM funding, that is being decreased next year. And our cash reserves are dropping as well because of the losses. This is the current, this is the state funding that we've had allowable growth since 2010, 2011. The average over that seven, eight-year period is about 1.83 percent. Now, cost of living's about 3, 3.5 percent. So we're falling behind the curve every year. The fear among the UEN, the Urban Education Network, which is the larger districts in Iowa, is that our allowable growth, we think, could be 0 percent in 1819. And we're also hearing, not hearing, but we're also thinking it could possibly happen the same in 19 and 20, that we wouldn't have any growth at all. The state revenue forecasts are down, and when those are down, kind of all bets are off in terms of school funding. This is the property valuation decrease that we've had. I show you, it went down slightly since last year, and that's the number we have to use for the 1718 year. They're always two years behind, so the assessment that we'll have a year from now, I hope will be up, but for right now, it's down. This is the cash reserves. I updated this through March, actually. The green line represents the current year, the blue line is last year, and the red line is the year before that. If you compare month to month to month, you can see our cash reserves have been dropping, and that's a function of the losses that we've been sustaining over the last several So I am proposing that we have a, we have an increase in the levy of, I originally proposed a 30 cent increase to the levy, which would have generated $600,000 of additional revenue. A taxpayer with a home appraised at $150,000 that have a tax value of 82.5, essentially they would have an exceedingly modest increase in their property taxes of about 25 bucks a year, about $2 a month. There'd be no impact on the spending authority ratio, but it would enhance the solvency ratio. The board met in a work session here in the last few weeks, and we came up with an alternative. The alternative was that we increased the levy only 15 cents, and then, and I'll show you here in a minute what I mean by this, but we can move 10 cents from the management levy, which is a separate component, up to the cash reserve levy, giving us 25 cents in the general fund. Generates 500,000 of revenue. Again, a home appraised at 150, but taxed at 82.5, pays about a dollar a month extra in property tax. No impact on the spending authority, but it would enhance the solvency ratio again. This is the history of the tax levy. I apologize if you can't read that too well, and that's not the right screen. That's the right screen. This is the history of the tax levy. The right two columns, if we do no increase in the levy, it would maintain at $16.85 per thousand roughly. The proposed increase of 15 cents, we'd get it to $17. Our cash reserve levy would go up from 3.7 million to about $4.2 million. You will note in the line, kind of in the middle of the page, it says "management levy." Current year, it's about 69.8 cents a thousand. If I move that 10 cents up, it drops to about 60 cents a thousand. The management levy is used to pay for unemployment taxes for all of our insurances, other than health insurance, and for the early retirement program. We have enough cash reserves on hand in that fund where we can, we can absorb a little drop in the, in the levy itself. Talk about 1819 for a minute. So this is a year from, a year out here from now. We are projecting a 0 percent increase in state aid. The model assumes flat enrollment, but what we're also looking at is that, you know, we've had a nice trend of enrollment growth, so we're hoping that we have an increase in enrollment there. We're again going to lose some local funding from the Iowa West grant of 134 grand. We have a 1 percent package increase that we've negotiated with our teachers' union that will likely go through the other staff members as well. I projected a 1 percent increase in other expenses. That may be a little low in some cases. We're having a health, health insurance reserve reduction for the 16-18 year, but in my model right now, we're not projecting doing that again in 1819. That's about a $725,000 savings. And a $400,000 textbook adoption purchase for 1718, we are delaying until 1819. So the reserve and the textbook adoption of, in and of themselves, if you compare 1718 to 1819, those two items alone is 1.1 million dollars right there of extra costs that we will have to absorb in 1819. This is a two-year forecast, assuming that state funding is 0 percent. If the board approves the tax increase tonight, we'd have a surplus of about $450,000, solvency ratio about 7.5 percent. Without the tax increase, we have a deficit of about 50 grand, and the solvency ratio drops about a half percent to 7. 1819, it looks a little bit more bleak. Even with the tax increase, we're gonna have a deficit of about $1.5 million. Solvency ratio drops to 6 percent. The minimum you want is five, so we're right at the bottom there. 1819, if we do not have a tax increase, the deficit is now $2.2 million, and the solvency ratio is now down around that five level. The deal is this: if we don't get any state funding extra, this is reality. And if the tax increase is not passed, you just have a bigger hill to climb a year from now. So I would recommend to the board that they could, they strongly consider passing a tax increase because we're just gonna make it more difficult on ourselves a year from now. With that, I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board?
Not a question particularly, but the chart you had about the historical tax rate levy, even with what you're proposing, we're less than we were five years ago.
That is correct.
So I hope our public realizes that we're trying to be as responsible as we can and still have money to run our school, to keep up what we're doing.
I agree. And I think we had a pretty robust and difficult conversation about this in the work session, so we're trying to be wise and fiscal, fiscal responsible. If there's no questions from the board, we can close our portion, and then we'll see if there's any input from the audience. Thank you, Dean. So now I'd open up this to the public. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments about the proposed budget for 2017-2018, you can please step forward. Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much for your attendance, or attendance during the public hearing. I now close the public hearing session. Now I'll open the regular board meeting of the Council Bluffs Community Schools for April 11th, 2017. Mr. Wilson, please call the roll.
Mr. Grove?
Present.
Mr. LaFerla?
Present.
Mr. Gazire?
Present.
Ms. Riley?
Present.
Mr. Hanson?
Present.
Mr. Arthur?
Present. Now, please join me in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Legions.
The Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. And now we go to one of our favorite parts of the meeting, maybe outside of the Sprouts playing. This is the "We Are Proud of Our Schools" introductions. Dr. Bruckner?
We are very proud of our schools, and tonight I'm going to tell you about our DECA students who have done remarkably well again this year. We're pleased to be celebrating the accomplishments of students who earned honors at the DECA State Career Development Conference held in February. Although 29 students represented our school district at the state level, we invited to this meeting the nine students who are in first or second place in their respective categories on the, in the competition. We want to present this district's STAR Award to these standout students as they prepare to compete in the International Career Development Conference and Competition in Anaheim, California, the last week of April. They're supported here tonight by Abraham Lincoln DECA sponsor, Kristy Nicholson, and Thomas Jefferson DECA sponsor, Matt Renshaw. Right? Hello? As I call each student's name, I'd invite you to join me at the podium and for your parents to stand in place to be recognized as well. Landon Tornaton earned first place as part of a team's franchise business plan. Devon O'Neill and Caleb Sneed were the other members of the franchise business plan team that earned first place. They're at a tennis match, so they can't join us tonight. In addition to this team award, Devon also earned second place in marketing communications, and Caleb also earned first place in sports marketing. Other winners tonight, Josue Lopez earned third place honors in food marketing. Kaitlin Brown will represent our district as the second-place winner for her team's tour and travel marketing plan. I'll be calling you, Kaitlin. Sophia Taylor earned second place honors with Kaitlin for tour and traveling marketing Ashley Idem earned third place as part of a team in the buying and merchandising operations Her team members Hannah Santay and Georgia Blanco are participating in a track meet tonight, so they can't join us. Other students are in fourth through seventh place during the state competition. We are extremely proud of you and of all of our students and our strong DECA chapters. Congratulations and best of luck at the international competition.
You know, Matt and I, we're gonna take every chance we can to say thank you and plug our CTSOs, but we really appreciate all your support, the board's support, administration's support, our principals, I know are here. We think CTSOs are the best part of, of our schools, of course, so again, we're proud of our DECA kids, and we just can't thank you enough.
Thank you.
Thank you, students. Now you can display those in some very wonderful place because you're a star student for Council Bluffs Schools. It is my privilege to introduce to you our Employees of the Month. Let me please ask Jackie Schroder to come on down. Let me tell you about Jackie. She has been working in the Council Bluffs Schools since 2013. She's a para educator at Rue Elementary School, and here's what her nominators said about her. Jackie has been living the mission as a para in the autism program, serving a nonverbal student for three years. In that time, Jackie has made huge contributions, not only to her assigned student, but to the entire program as well. She has worked tirelessly to advocate for her student. Jackie has high expectations for all students, both behaviorally and academically. Because of her caring determination, her student is now able to write his name legibly as well as write sentences. He has grown in his ability to communicate and in his academic skills in both reading and math. She's always looking for new ways to keep him engaged by creating activities or looking for new apps that will allow him to independently practice his skills. Jackie supports three other students in two grade levels in their general education classrooms when she's not assisting her one-to-one student. She collaborates with others to modify assignments and searches for activities that match individual interests. Jackie is also active in Rue's 21st Century After School Clubs and also volunteers as a Cub Scout leader. She never hesitates to help a student or colleague in need. She's very skilled at de-escalating students in crisis, and she's always there to lend a helping hand wherever needed. Jackie Schroder is a shining example of living the mission for all our kids at Rue. She's supported here tonight by her husband, Jody, as well as Rue principal, Amy Glym, and others. So Jackie, on behalf of the Board of Education, our administrative team, and the Community Education Foundation, we present you with this trophy as our Support Staff Employee of the Month and a gift certificate from the Community Education Foundation and Harrah's Also a staff member of the month, Brandy Matney, first-grade teacher at Longfellow Elementary Brandy Matney has been working in the Council Bluffs Schools also since 2013. She's a first-grade teacher at Longfellow Elementary School, and here's what her nominators said about her. Be kind whenever possible. It's always possible. That's a quote by Dalai Lama that exemplifies Brandy. She is extremely kind, and she has a positive attitude. Her strong work ethic and can-do attitude make her a strong leader. Brandy is an amazing teacher who always puts students first. She's dedicated to finding new and innovative ways to keep her kids in her kids engaged and moving. She provides students with opportunities to become independent and productive. She's a unique and totally out-of-the-box teacher. She has so many creative ways of teaching her students with a consistent and constant positive praise. If a student completes a problem, she has the entire class give twinkle fingers.
Passing on good energy.
That's Brandy's language for way to go. Even when they make mistakes, the attitude by the class is, "Mistakes are good." Her students are wrapped in her loving patience and kindness daily and are allowed to grow with her leadership in all aspects of their life. Brandy has a heart as big as she is. That's not very big. Brandy has a heart as big as she is, and she's an asset to Longfellow, the school district, and most of all, to our students. Brandy is supported here tonight by husband Drew, parents Steve and Debbie Pearson, and sister Nicole Thompson. Longfellow principal Gary Milborn could not be here tonight because of a home responsibility. Brandy, on behalf of all of us, I'm going to let you have these words, and Jackie, I'm going to give you yours too, because, you know, as a teacher, you want that more often.
That's right.
I want to give you this trophy as Licensed Staff Employee of the Month and from the Council of Community Education Foundation and Harrah's, $50 to go celebrate.
Yeah, congratulations, Brandy and Jackie. That's awesome. Now we come to approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of our agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. There's no changes or anything?
I don't think so.
Do we do a roll call? Brain not working. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. It carries. Now I need approval of the minutes for the work session of March 28th, regular meeting of March 28th, and special meeting of March 29th. Is there a motion?
I move that the minutes of the March 28th, 2017 work session, the March 28th, 2017 regular meeting, and the March 29th, 2017 special meeting be approved as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. There are no changes to the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. And approval of the minutes is carried. Now we come to the public participation portion of the regular meeting. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board regarding agenda items or other matters. And we have one person called in before, Sean Shea, has requested to speak on Crescent Elementary School and update on all that the community's doing. Sean, please step forward. Speak clearly into the mic so people at home can hear you.
Okay. I wanted to give you an update on the Crescent community and what we've been doing. And I think they gave me five minutes, so I think this will take about a minute or two.
All right.
We've developed a marketing plan to help enrollment out there at Crescent, and we're working through that. And we've had three or four meetings. I'm not quite sure how many I've been to, but it seems to be a blur since we've got the support of the board to keep Crescent open. So we've developed a brochure that we're going to use in our marketing campaign. And I want to say thanks to Diane. She's been a big help. And, you know, we've had a lot of questions and, you know, maybe more than you needed to address. And I know we've been a little repetitive, and we're trying to streamline that process so that we don't waste your time or any of the other administration. You know, I know I've made some calls, and we will get that streamlined. We're just working through the growing pains. You know, we've got a really diverse group out there, and we're really optimistic about Crescent. We're pretty excited. So I just wanted to give you that update. By the way, we have created a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We've already received a couple of grants. We're waiting for our official federal ID number, and as soon as we get that. So we are developing a funding stream to help support the community school out there at Crescent. And I did want to give you that update. So I just want to keep in touch with you, and I don't mean to waste your time or anything, but I would like to come in and at least keep everybody informed about where we're at and what we're doing. We are having an open house on the 18th, and we're pretty excited about that, hoping we can get some new members of Crescent Elementary involved out there. So, okay, hope to see as many of you as would come. I would hope to see you all there. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the board? Okay, we will move on then. Now we come to the Superintendent's Report, and student achievement is our first, as always, student achievement is our first thing.
Dr. Vorthman and a host of friends are going to share with you our initial planning related to summer school.
Good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to introduce to you Camp Summer Explore 2017, along with two of the folks who are leading the efforts tonight, not only to prepare our students for a successful summer school program, but also think about how we are bridging the transition from the end of one school year to the beginning of the other year. And we have an exciting announcement that we will make at the end of this presentation that will help illustrate how we are trying to help provide students with as much opportunity for learning, both inside and outside the traditional school day as possible. But it's my pleasure to introduce to you tonight Carly Gates. She is one of our teacher leaders, currently an instructional coach at Wilson, and also serving as the Assistant Program Director for Summer Learning, as well as Dr. Sandy Day, the Director of the 21st Century Learning Centers Grant.
Good evening, everyone. Like Dr. Vorthman said, my name is Carly Gates, and I'm the Assistant Program Director for Summer Programming this year. I actually talked with you in October about all the successes that we saw during 2016, but I'm even more excited to be here to talk to you about our plan for 2017. As you can see, we have completely rebranded. We are now Camp Summer Explore. There are a few reasons for that, but one of them being our exciting new partnership with 21st Century. So I'm going to let Sandy introduce herself.
Thanks, Carly. Hi, everybody. Dealing with a little bit of allergy issues, so I apologize. When we first started to sit down a few months ago to talk about the summer experience from 21st Century's perspective, it felt like we were in a silo. 21st Century was offering these things over here, completely separate from what Council Plus Community School District through Iowa West Foundation and other resources were offering. So there was like a hand doing some work over here, and then a hand doing some work over here. So we thought, wouldn't it be a great idea if we brought these together and created an opportunity to serve more students throughout the summer for a longer period of time? And that's exactly what we've been able to develop on both the elementary, middle, and high school level. We are extremely excited about the things that are coming together for our students. Are you ready?
Sure. Okay, so our kind of theme this year is Grow, Explore, Succeed. And when we think about that grow part, we're talking about the elementary program first. One of the things that Sandy mentioned is that it is super exciting. We are now going to be able to offer a seven-week program for elementary students, which, as you're probably thinking, is the whole summer, basically. So it will run from June 19th to August 11th. There won't be programming the week of the 4th, and it will be hosted at Dixon and Longfellow this year. So we'll have eight sections of 15 for incoming first through fourth grade, and then we'll have four sections of 20 incoming fifth-grade students. Another piece that's really exciting for the elementary program is that we are going to be running a pre- and post-assessment called the Rapid Assessment. It will measure core parts of literacy, word recognition, academic language, and reading comprehension. And the really neat thing about that is that we're really going to be able to homogeneously group students based on where they're at. And then we'll be able to drill down even further and offer every student a 30-minute intervention every day based on their specific needs. So we are super excited about that. So our goal for elementary, obviously, is just to increase achievement and bridge that gap. And with this seven-week program, we're definitely hoping to be able to do that. And then middle level is going to look very similar than to what it has in the past. It is going to be offered at the Henry Dorley Zoo again, which is super exciting. But this year, we are going to offer two sessions, which means that we will be able to double the amount of students that we're going to be able to reach. We're already starting enrollment, and the numbers are climbing higher right now than they have last year at the end of enrollment. So we're super excited about that. And our goal for this really is to increase student engagement. We want to show kids that learning is all around them, and we really want to get them out into the community. So.
And then finally, our high school offering is going to look somewhat similar to last year in that all during the month of June, we'll be focusing on credit recovery. Now, students have not been identified yet. I know the counselors are working on that right now, trying to determine which students need that credit recovery. And so they'll be invited to be a part of this here in the coming weeks. But the thing that's unique that we're actually able to offer this summer specifically from the 21st Century side of the house is, I don't know if you recall this, we talked, I think, early fall about a summer career institute that we were able to put together at Iowa Western Community College, where the morning was about learning on campus from a professor or an assistant professor, and then the afternoon, we took trips out into the community to see what that career looked like on a personal level. We're taking that afternoon piece, and we're offering that to our students who are needing credit recovery, because we think that there's a tremendous amount of work we can do with them and provide them with some experiences where they can see careers or trades that they might be interested in going into in the future. And so that's a wrap of the elementary, middle, and summer school program. I did want to say one more thing. Oh, we have these for you. We brought you a present. And because it's on the bottom of your save the dates, and there are additional summer academies, career academies, that we're offering this summer based on that Iowa Western model. That model has stood out to UNO, to Creighton, and to Metro, and they're all trying to imitate that sort of thing. Currently, we have two full weeks of summer career academy, followed by a third partial week. And when those details are completely solidified, we'll make sure that you have those in hand. Now, before we ask for questions, oh, wait, maybe we should do that. Oh, well, no, we're going to ask for questions, for sure. Questions?
Any questions from the board on this exciting program?
I didn't do the math, but how many students are we approximately serving in each level?
Oh, that's a great question. So at the elementary level, we're looking, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong. At the two sites, we're looking to serve 280 students, so 560 students at elementary. For, did we say it? Seven weeks, right? Five days a week. That's pretty awesome. And then middle level, 180 students for each session, so that's 360. And then the numbers, we're not exactly certain on the high school credit recovery because they haven't been identified yet.
And most of these students are recommended by their teachers to do this?
At each level, you mean? Yes, but we're blanketing with media as well, but particularly at the elementary level. We have so many elementary students, yes, there's a recommendation on a set allotment of seats per school so that each school can nominate students for that program.
Is it a first-come, first-served, as far as admission, or you hope to serve everybody?
At some point, it does. Yes, at some point, it becomes that, yeah.
Thank you.
Is the career exploration part open to other kids, or just the kids in career recovery?
Yes, the career exploration part. And again, some of that stuff is not quite solidified yet, but it is. In addition to those afternoon things that are going to be going on in June for the high school students, we also have additional clubs, everything from weightlifting to, oh geez, just name it. All the way through the summer, even, we're going to send a group of kids to see the solar eclipse on August 21st. How fun is that? So, yes, so those afternoon pieces, I'm glad you asked that question, are going to be advertised to students who are not in credit recovery. We hope to be able to serve a lot of students in that way this summer.
Thank you.
Can I give you that great announcement, then? Are you ready? So that's the good news. Want to see the better news? We most recently had a visit by our 21st Century site consultant from Des Moines Public Schools, Vic Jaras, was here with us for about three days. And his job to be here this time around was to really investigate to see if we're doing what we promised we were going to do at the two middle schools. The two middle schools are in their third year, and if you recall how this grant works, after a third year, there's an intensive review, and if we pass, we get two years of additional funding at 75%. And not only did we pass, but we earned exceptional ratings in two areas. One was our community partners. I don't know if you know this, but we have about 102 community partners that help us pull off some of these things like the career explorations and those sorts of things. He was extremely thrilled about that. When we talked about summer school, I thought he was going to jump out of his chair. He said, "Nowhere across the state is it happening this way," and he's really wanting to see that achievement based on the rapid results, and I promised we'd get it to him, because he really wants to be able to highlight yet again where Council of Schools is doing first-ever stuff. And he keeps calling us a model across the state. And he sees over 100 sites. I believe he's right. And then, right before he left, he said, "Do you want to know about the next award?" Because, as you recall, we put in the next award. And so we said, I said, "Yes, I really do." But I was nervous because I really was scared. But then guess what? We scored first in the state. We are going to be able to serve students at Carter Lake and at Roosevelt Elementary. Our original request was $300,000, just like the middle school, for three years. And then, if we pass, pass. We get another two years at 75%. We were cut by $50,000, so we are only going to get $250,000 for three years. And then, if we pass, we'll get 75% of that for two more years. And when you add all that up, that's $1.12 million for those two schools to start before and after-school programs and summer programs.
Yay! Did you get that on camera? Did you get that?
Wow. That is amazing.
Excellent work. That's amazing. Any kudos, I guess, from the board? Do you want to talk directly? No?
Wow. Wow.
A quick question. Is this rapid results thing, is that a new program? You've not used that before?
Yes, it is new. It is through Lexia. So we're going to do a pre and a post, and we're training the instructional coaches right now to give the students that before the end of the school year. And then the summer program teachers will be trained to give it at the end. Oh, yes. And we're working with Deborah Reed at the Iowa Reading Research Center. And so we're going to be doing some of the similar things that we did last year with kind of the voice recording and different things like that, to be able to really look at the fidelity of the interventions and of what we're doing during summer programming, to see exactly what is successful and maybe, you know, things that could be improved.
That's great.
Deborah Reed is volunteering her time, partially because she's a really nice person, but partially because she wants to be in on this, because this is a great program. She recognized that last year in her work with us, and since there's not statewide summer school pilots this year, she is glad to be part of ours. So we're glad to have her.
Congratulations.
Pretty exciting.
Amazing.
Yeah. Great job, everybody. That's amazing. Yeah. Great job, everybody. That's amazing. Excellent. So now, we have informational presentations from Teammates, but that's going to be hard to follow, guys.
That's a dare.
So wow us.
Good evening. Just in case you were wondering about Dr. Day, her energy level is like that all day, every day. Her office is right next door to mine, so I get to see Sandy all the time. And we are very excited to be extending the 21st Century Grant to a couple more elementary schools. That's not why I'm here tonight. Tonight, I am here to talk about Teammates. Again, made a few presentations the last few meetings about just ways we're supporting kids. This is just another way that we support a lot of kids. Tracy Drescher is here. She is our Teammates coordinator for... She works for Council Bluffs Schools, but she works with the board of the Teammates, the Council Bluffs Board for Teammates, so she's here to do a presentation.
Thank you, Tim. Sandy and team, congratulations. Super exciting. Board, good evening.
Good evening.
I'm going to start out tonight, and for some of you, you know, you don't know about Teammates until you know about it. So I wanted to give you a brief history of how Teammates started and where we're at today. Teammates began in 1992 with a vision of Coach Osborne and his wife Nancy. He was then a coach at Nebraska and felt like there was something that he could do to give back to the students in the community. So he decided that they would go to their football players and asked if any of them would be interested in going into the middle schools. 22 players at that time said, "Yes, Coach, we want to do that." So fast forward 25 years later, there are over 8,000 adults, like you and me, that mentor students in community school districts in 143 communities in four states. So who we are, Teammates is a one-to-one mentoring program. It is school-based, and our mentors do meet with our students once per week. Our goal is to get the adults to visit during the school year at least 24 times. So for instance, trimester two is the most recent that we completed. And in Council Bluffs, our average visit per mentor was 8.62 times for the trimester. So we're right on track. We do match students in grades 3 through 12. And there actually is a post-secondary program where you can stay matched with your student because the goal is to get them to graduate. And there are scholarships that are available only to Teammates students that can take them on into higher education. The program is developmental. This is really important to know in that we're not a remedial program. It's not a fix-it program. We don't put kids in front of you that we want you to fix. We put kids in front of you that are great kids that just need an extra caring adult in their life. One of the things that our adults do is they focus on the strengths of their students. And the mission of Teammates overall is to positively impact the world by inspiring youth in our communities to reach their full potential and hopefully doing that through that mentoring process. Our research shows Teammates works with Gallup, and the research shows that when a student is looking forward to seeing a mentor, that they are more hopeful. And when they're more hopeful, they have a better sense of well-being. And with that, they are more engaged. So that usually equates into the classroom. We do send Teammates information at the end of each school year that talks about grades, attendance, and behavior. By providing hope to these students that we have in the Teammates program, our mentors are reminding these kids how important they are and that they matter to somebody maybe outside of the home or outside of the classroom. The core values of Teammates have stood true through the times. We are committed to the students through their safety and the safety of the mentors. And we do that with integrity and trust and always inclusion. Teammates is for anybody. The important thing is students have to want to do it first. As a parent, you can think Teammates would be great for your student. As a staff member, you could think that this student could do a little bit better. But if the student's not interested, frankly, it's not the program for them because we want to put a student in front of our adults that is just as excited to be in this program as we are. The vision of the organization to date is to become the gold standard in mentoring and to service 12,000 students by the year 2020. The thing that you'll notice here that comes first is the gold standard part. The number is second. We want these matches to be solid. We don't want to just build numbers and just have it be a program that is not structured and right for the students. In Council Bluffs, our goal by the end of the 18, 19 school year is to serve 200 youth and have our matches average 24 or more visits per year by the end of that school year. So with that, a few things that I'll touch on this evening are in the areas of recruitment, monitoring, and support and financials. The Council Bluffs chapter of Teammates, I'm proud to say, is very viable and it's very well-respected within the Teammates organization. It has been through the years and continues to be so, and I'm proud to be a part of that. What you'll see in front of you on the screen are community partners that we have had the opportunity to work with this year. These can be partners that might have offered us financial support. They also might be organizations that give their employees time to leave the workplace, to go mentor, or they could be both. So by collaborating with organizations that you've just seen, it's my role also to collaborate with the Teammates central office staff. There are other program coordinators in the metro area, and we get together at least three times a year. There is the Council Bluffs Board of Directors for Teammates, of course, our awesome mentors and mentees. We have building coordinators at each school. So I could not do this job alone. There are staff members such as school administrative managers, counselors, perhaps secretaries, that are the contact at each one of our schools that I can work through and facilitate information to in each of those locations. And by working together, we work on recruiting, we work on our fundraising efforts, and events for our matches throughout the school year. Other ways that we help to monitor and support these matches in our school, the mentors have a designated sign-in book at each location, and that's where we capture that information on how many visits that they're coming in for each trimester. Some of the match events that we've had this year, we went to a Creighton game. We just most recently went to Disney on Ice. And one of our biggest events of the year is the zoo. And just about every mentor and mentee goes to that event. Last year, I said I took 150 of my closest friends to the zoo that day. It was kind of fun. There are other things that are available for the mentors. If they're a new match, or even if they're an ongoing match, Teammates has a website where there are all kinds of ideas and opportunities out there. We send surveys out a lot, so mentors can give us feedback on things that would be helpful to their match. So when they tell us about things that they need, oftentimes academies are created for the mentors that they can attend. And those are usually one-hour sessions. We offer those not only in Council Bluffs, but in the Omaha area. The matching process, I wanted to tell you about that a little bit. Again, we talked about the student wanting to be in the program. And so once the student says yes, then the parent has to say yes. And that yes is a written permission form. A match is not made until that is secured. So a mentor, if you're not aware, once you apply, you need to fill out a background check. You give us three reference checks, and we get to put you in a training class. It's three hours, but anybody that's in Teammates can attest, we have fantastic trainers. That three hours flies by quickly, and there's lots of great information. So our Teammates mentors are promise keepers. One of the incredible things that they do for their mentees, and I see this myself, you see in your student what they don't see in themselves until they do. And you help speak vision into their lives. And we do that currently for 162 students in the Council Bluffs School District. This year alone, we have brought on 45 new matches, plus we have welcomed six matches from the Omaha metro area. So that's another thing that's great about that partnership. Students are mobile these days. And so if they move across the river one way or another, there's usually a chapter there. And the mentors, being a promise keeper, most often follow those students. There was a gentleman at a training class this week that has followed his student to seven different schools since they've been matched. That is a promise keeper, for sure. So the last thing, or the second to the last thing that I wanted to go over was the board. And our board members are members of the community that are very familiar with Teammates. They're familiar with Teammates because each and every one of them are mentors themselves. They help us define a mission for our chapter, and they speak on behalf of the program in the community to help us recruit mentors and to be financially viable. These are the 11 board members that are currently with us. We meet on a bi-monthly basis. And with that, these folks are on a three-year term. For a few years, some of them have actually been on the board more than three years. But we've got everybody on terms now, so we have three that will come off this year. So I'm happy to say that we recruited three new board members this year that are on here now. So it's a good transition period so that we continue to maintain on the board and to be stable. Financially is the last piece. And each of these items up here, whether it would be a fundraising campaign, whether it be through donations, it could be a grant. To date, for this school year, we have raised over $17,000 to take care of the expenses. We talked about all those mentors that we brought on board this year. Of those 45 mentors, each one of them to run a background check. Whether you work for the school district, or you work for a company that does background checks, Teammates requests a background check, and we pay for those. And those are between $30 and $34 per person. Then each of our mentors, each of those 162 mentors, every three years, we run another background check. So that's another $30 to $34. So that's just one expense that we have that we continue to make sure that we're raising funds, not only for the students, but to maintain, again, that safety, that integrity, and that trust. So in closing, I was at a talk recently with Dr. Osborne, and ironically, he was talking to a group of bankers. And he talked about things that you could do for people in your life. And he says, "As bankers, you know that you can always make more money. But your time, you can't make more time." And so when you folks give of your time to these students, it's the biggest and best thing that you can do for someone. So in order for teamwork to make the dream work, which it does, we do that as mentors here in the community with these students in our school district by validating what is good and what is unique about them. I will close with some future actions that I'm excited about for next year. So each of our board members is on a committee, and that would be a committee of finance, recruitment, or match support. And they choose which area that they can be most impactful in. Next year, we're going to create subcommittees. And so if I were a board member, I might reach out to somebody that I know in the community, and we'll meet on the alternate months. And the hope in this is that we're going to create additional partnerships. We're going to strengthen our presence here in the community. And hopefully, those folks who are not actually on the board could be future board members for us to make us stronger. So with that, I'd like to close and honor any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? I guess I have one question. I have one question. So do we have more mentors? Like mentors out there wanting to do this?
No, I use up all the mentors that we have. So we have more students that would love to be in the program.
So how many students do you have who'd love to be in the program?
I can't give you a number.
I mean, it's probably a lot.
Sure. I mean, I could find 100 kids if you had 100 mentors.
So I don't know how many people are watching this right now out there. Millions of people across Council Bluffs watching this. But obviously, how would they get involved if they wanted to become a mentor?
Okay. Well, they could contact me. They could call the school offices here and ask for Tracy Drescher. They could go to teammates.org, and there is a process where they can sign up online. They can be nominated, well, you know, come one, come all. The thing that's really important that I think you should know is that it's not a first-come, first-served program. And there's a reason for that. Because just like your friends that you spend some time with, you have a few things in common. And so mentors, when they go to training, they fill out an interest form. I interview each and every student that I'm going to put in front of an adult because I try to find one to two common denominators that'll get that match started.
I guess it'd be nice to see that. I don't know how often we promote it on our district sites or on our Facebook and Twitter and everything, but I think it would be great to have it be where we have mentors waiting in the wings for kids.
That would be fantastic, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so now we move to the resolution portion of the meeting. First up is approval of the 2017, 2018 certified budget. Is there a motion?
I would move that we approve the 17, 18 budget as presented.
Excellent. Thank you, Bill. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a move and a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this from the board? Okay, Dean, call the roll.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
No.
Mr. Hanson?
No.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now we have approval of bid 17-011 Kern Middle School exterior tuck-pointing sofa and interior art room project. Is there a motion?
Move to approve bid number 17-011 Kern Middle School exterior tuck-pointing sofa and interior art room project to Anderson Construction of Council Bluffs, Iowa in the amount of $428,000.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Dean?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And we have approval of the Kern project. And I have approval of E-Rate Form 470 bid. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the bid for category one E-Rate eligible internet service provider services with Cox Business at a cost of $5,960 per month.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on this? I guess just so people at home know that district out-of-cost is only $596 per month, which is a phenomenal deal that school boards and other entities receive through the program. No discussion, Dean?
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now I see a second.
We have a second.
We have a second.
Yeah, I see a second motion tied to the E-Rate bids. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid for category two E-Rate eligible wireless access points, network hardware, firewalls, and wireless support with SmartWave Technologies at a cost of $281,694 and $42,254 district out-of-pocket cost after 85% E-Rate discount.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Does everybody understand where this E-Rate comes from? Is that what we pay on our telephone bill? Isn't it?
Mr. Springer is our expert, yes.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think people should know this doesn't come out of the air. But it's a good deal for schools, that's for sure.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. I mean, you just saw on our packet that we had received only like $590,000 in assistance over the years that we've had this program. Okay, Dean?
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Now we have approval of the contract with Iowa Vocational Rehabilitation Services. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the agreement with Iowa Rehabilitation Services as presented.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on this? Is everyone aware what this is?
This is our new partnership with Vodec to provide transitional services to our high school students. We will pay for one teacher, and they will pay for one teacher, so it's a good program.
Yeah, they're trying to achieve employment for these kids who are transitioning out of the service. Dean, go ahead and call the roll.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes. And the motion is carried. Yes, and the motion to approve, the contract has been approved. Now, we have policy review approval, first reading of policies. And I can read policies 208, 223, 227, 228, 430, 625, 709, and 911, or 911. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the first reading of the policies as presented.
Second?
Second.
Excellent. Any discussion on these policies? At this time? Okay. Dean, go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Riley?
Yes.
Mr. LaFurla?
Yes.
Mr. Grove?
Yes.
Mr. Gazire?
Yes.
Dr. Ogres?
Yes.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Arthur?
Yes, and we've approved the first reading of the policies. I'll bring them up next time for second reading. Now, we have approval of contract to appoint Dr. Vicky Marillo as superintendent of Council Bluffs Community Schools effective July 1, 2017. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the employment contract as presented to employ Dr. Vicky Marillo as superintendent of the Council Bluffs Community School District effective July 1, 2017.
Thank you, Dave. Is there a second?